Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody and call tonight's regular scheduled school committee meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February 5th, 2015. Time now is just after seven o'clock. There is no from our agenda, there is no executive session tonight, so first order of business, we're going to pledge allegiance, so I'll ask this. Legs to my left.
(inaudible)
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're just going to go right down the gender. Agenda, we do not have anybody that we want to recognize tonight, but we're going to jump into our student representative report. Great, thanks for clearing your schedule and spending some time with us tonight. If you could just give us an update, we appreciate that.
Of course. Notes from Tuxbury Memorial High School. International Club ran a successful Souls for Soul shoe drive last week. Student Council is running a Teens for Jeans drive this week. There are collection bins in the library and Mrs. Glass's room, A205. They're also getting ready for the state conference in March. The National Honor Society is having tutoring on Tuesday and Friday mornings in the library, and Random Acts of Kindness Week is next week. The senior class council is selling merchandise. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Greg. We appreciate that. You're welcome to stay or just hang out?
Have a good night.
Next, I want to generally do some presentations. Tonight, we have two guests, Dr. Connor.
We do.
We're going to talk about budget, but first.
First, we want to talk about textbooks.
Yep.
We have with us this evening veteran educator, everyone knows Brian Aylwood, head of the department, he's manager of the department here. And sitting to his right, you're going to come up there, both of you guys are going to bring a chair up, is Jay Scopper, who is a new teacher here this year at Tuxbury. She's also a Tuxbury resident and a graduate of Tuxbury High School. Jay is probably more nervous tonight than she was when she interviewed with me. I can tell you that right now. I have a couple of things I'd like to share with you from Assistant Superintendent Reagan. She could not be here, she's at the Alice training that's going on right now. So I'm going to read a little something, then I'm going to turn it over to our two educators. In our continuing efforts to evaluate curriculum resources, a need to look at TMHS World Studies textbooks became clearly evident. The textbooks we currently use for freshmen and sophomore World Studies are outdated with copyrights of 1993, '94, and 2000. Brian Aylwood garnered the cooperation of teachers to pilot two new World Studies texts. They include World History Vol. 1 and 2 by Pearson. Frank Cusick actually piloted that. And World History Patterns and Interactions by Holt McDougal, and Jay Scopper is the one who piloted that. After approximately three months of use, a recommendation to move forward with Holt McDougal, World History Patterns and Interaction, is a presentation here this evening. You have information in your packet for you to review. And what we are looking for, well, we're going to have Brian and Jay tell you a little bit about the program, why we selected this program, but more importantly, the reason why we're doing this tonight is by your policy, once we've had identified textbook that we wish to adopt, we need to put them on public display for a minimum of two weeks so that community, parents, students, teachers can come in and look at those textbooks and offer their opinion through the superintendent. Those books will be on display for the next several weeks up in the Assistant Superintendent's office, and we will be bringing to you on March 11th a recommendation to purchase these books, the one with, of course, the cost, et cetera, for those books. So with that, let's turn it over to our two educators.
All right, thanks for having us. You know, I won't reiterate what was in the letter, but I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk about what we've done. This is our book, World History, People, Nations, that has been, you know, Holt, Reinhardt, and Winston, and it's been a great book for us, and I think that, you know, they're kind of beat up. Not much in World History has actually changed, we understand that, but how the material gets presented for the students has changed. And, you know, with the technology that we have available to us here at the new school, and the kids' readiness to use that kind of technology, it was time for an update for sure, and, you know, we did the two, the two pilots. This one is the one that was piloted by Frank Cusick. It's printed in Hall, it has, you know, it's produced by Pearson. And Pearson has a lot of the online multimedia tools that accompany most new textbooks, but we do use many Pearson products now, so teachers would be familiar with that, the software that comes with it, the online materials and the pass codes for students and whatnot. So we thought that would be a good idea to pilot. The biggest problem we found with this book is that it comes in two volumes, and what we're looking to do is to, you know, get a textbook that would service all of our students that take a mandatory course, a required course for all freshmen and sophomores, which is our World Studies course, part of which is World History, the other part is the English end of that curriculum. So we do need to service, you know, two grade levels worth of students. This book that, from Pearson, comes in two volumes, so we would almost need to order to go through with something like that. We need to order a set for the ninth grade and then a different volume for the 10th grade. So that was the biggest drawback. It is a good book. The book that we chose is World History, Patterns of Interaction. It's probably the most widely used across the country for that subject at high school level, and for good reasons. It's a very, very well-written, it's easy to use. They have a partnership with Holt McDougal, they have a partnership with the History Channel, so all of the online features that come with the book will allow the students with their online use of the textbook would get a direct link into a lot of the resources that are readily available from the History Channel. So brief clips from particular, you know, History Channel productions that they've done on the History Channel to help them better understand what the material that they've just read. It's really a good tool to have. Then Jay can speak more about the things that, she's a brand new teacher, we're lucky to have her, she's done a great job for us, and she was willing to take on the duty of doing a pilot for us, and she did a real good job, gave us some good feedback on the book. All right, Jay.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the possibility of these new textbooks. So over the course of about the past 10 weeks, I've been piloting the Patterns of Interaction textbook, and I found that there are just many features and aspects to this textbook which make it conducive to learning at the high school level, and a couple of those I just wrote up to kind of review. So I broke it down into positive aspects of the textbook for both teachers and students. So for these positive aspects of the textbook for the teachers, I said it outlines essential questions and main ideas of each chapter. It's aligned with the Common Core standards. It provides appropriate primary and secondary source documents for high school students. It differentiates reading sources geared toward various reading levels. It provides section and chapter assessments to be assigned online and completed by students online, that can be checked by the teachers. And it provides differentiated instruction for English language learners. It provides resources in Spanish as well. And the section and chapter resources include, but are not limited to, lesson plans, PowerPoints, varied formal and informal assessments, a lot of activities which can be engaging during class. It provides answer keys and guided reading workbook assignments. Some of the positive aspects of the textbook for the students are that it connects historical context of each unit to modern day. So it provides, whether that be multimedia video links, as I know what I was saying, to the History Channel, or it connects you to websites, websites which will go into current events that the units relate to. It provides interactive maps for students to view. Online notes and graphic organizers and writing templates are available. There is pre-made graphic organizers, and there is actually an option for students to create graphic organizers on the website as well. It provides digital flashcards for vocabulary, so they can, it really, you know, scaffolds these positive study strategies for note-taking and creating graphic organizers and studying with flashcards. It provides video and multimedia connections. Audio recordings of the textbook are also provided. The chapters are broken into major sections and subtopics, and the language is very clear and concise. So it really seemed to work, work well to the reading level of various different reading levels in the classroom.
So any questions for our two educators sitting here this evening? Any questions about the textbooks? Ms. Palamino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question, I thought this was great, and thank you for all the information in the packet, was, I know there's a proposal here for the series that you picked, which, you know, you have your reasons why, and they're excellent. I was just curious, was there a differential price between the two series, or do you have any baseline for what that might have been? But this one looks like it's $39,000, uh, hold on.
That's an unofficial, unofficial number, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I was just saying around that, was there a difference in price between the two different series?
There was, but the, I think, if, what we had to do is order the two separate volumes of this book, it would surpass what we'd end up paying for this. The other deal is that, you know, Midland, Hockaway, which is, you know, they're the ones that would be the company that you'd deal with here, they had a deal, they last, you know, he's going to honor that, they had a special that was like no shipping costs, and we kept, they have some savings that way. In addition, the way that we order books is not to have, you know, an equal number of actual hard textbooks per student. What we try to do is get classroom sets for the classroom, used in the classroom, and then along with every textbook that you buy, there's an online license that will last you six years. And then in order to accommodate the other students, you know, you get as many as you would have books, there'd be more students. Those students would, you would then just have to, at a much lower cost, you just buy the, purchase the six-year licenses.
Yeah, that was my, my second question was about the online piece, which I think, you know, is the technology is the way it's driven, and I think even at home and so forth, for the students to be doing their work and accessing it with their families. I think that's actually a wonderful piece, so I'm glad to see we're moving in that direction. But I thought it was excellent. So I'm glad to see that you did do your price comparison and that this series would be more cost-effective for us. Not that that's always the right answer, but it actually works in our favor that it is cost-effective, and it's the best series for our students. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Palamino. Good point, good point. Anybody else want to add anything? Have any questions? I think that's pretty good. It's, oh, yep.
So the copy up there is the one that you have on display?
We have that, and a lot of the supplemental materials will be on display in the, in the office, and Mrs. Reagan gets this.
Okay.
So, thank you both for coming.
Thank you very much.
Jay, you did outstanding, thank you for the work.
Thank you for having us.
Good. Just while we're on, while they're, they're vacating, I just want to remind the committee that one of our top priorities this year is to look at our elementary science program, and we are in the process right now of reviewing science fusion. It is the next generation of science standards that have been incorporated into this program. We've trained five pilot teachers at both the training on North Street and at the Orion School. They are working with this, and later in the school year, we will be coming to you with recommendations about science as well. Please keep in mind that all of the funds for these textbooks are available and in our budget. We're not asking for anything that's, it's not already allocated in our budget. Some of these, these funds were the one-time funds for textbooks that we made a case with the town manager and the Board of Selectment for the, for this year. So the funds for that will all be covered. We just, as Mrs. Palamino noted, want to make sure we get a good bang for our buck, and I think the program that they showed tonight is one that, that will give us that.
And Dr. Connor, when would that be purchased, would that be purchased for the upcoming year?
Yes, we'll order them now, and, you know, if we can break them in in some of the classes, we'll do that. But the intent is, we purchase now, start off the new year. However, we are going into the fourth quarter, we may be able to, at least in one class, possibly two, use those textbooks for the remainder of the year, but probably not for all of the classes, because those teachers have not had any training yet, who knows? And that will be part of the process. We bring the teachers in over the summer, we get one of the textbook consultants to commit, they walk them through the various aspects of the book.
Excellent. That's exciting. Ms. Palamino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one suggestion, and it's not time-sensitive. Is there any possible way that you could present to the committee a master plan for the overall district on new materials and so forth, like whether it be one year, three year, five year? Just a master plan on what are the different subject matters, what are the different grade levels that we plan to purchase in the course, you know, over the next, you know, three to five years?
We can do that. Our focus is, well, has been in the last two years, was to update all of these primary textbooks at the middle school and the high school that were reaching their expiration date. Some had actually exceeded their expiration date. We've done that. We've introduced new foreign language books, new math books, new social studies books. So we've been working on that. We do have a list in our office of textbooks that are associated with various classes and the years of publication. We can look at that and share that with you, and give you some ideas of what we're looking at. Clearly, math and reading at the K6 level is something that will be on the horizon, because we've had these programs in place now for eight and 10 years, and we'll, we'll take a look at that. So we'll bring that to you. It may not be next week, at next week's meeting, but we'll, we'll get it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. I just think that's important, that we share with the community our master plan and what it is we're going about over the next, you know, three to five years, as far as updating materials and changing the curriculum. So that'd be terrific. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Connor, we have Ms. Matthews all set.
Mrs. Matthews is all set. Look at her sitting over there. She is ready to walk us through our introductory fiscal 2016 budget. This is the draft. This will change from tonight. Now, you have a, you have a document in your packet, she gave you a new document, because there were some numbers that the town manager has changed. Please, put a big X on the one that was in your packet, because that's no longer valid, and put 2515, either up in the top corner or bottom corner, so you know, this is the one, the current one. And we'll make sure in the future, all these revisions will come to you with revised dates on them, so we know which ones we're talking about.
Yeah, I apologize, I did not write that on the front.
And I know this, Dr. Connor, this budget, we usually try to get this earlier out to the public, and it's usually, I know with the snow, it's delayed a few days.
Snow, other fiscal constraints that we've been working with the town manager, the Board of Selectment, has delayed us, but as you're going to see tonight, much of the budget, we've looked at a lot of level funding. We haven't had to do a great deal of research and work on, on some areas, yet in other areas, we've devoted the last six to eight weeks trying to, to come up with some ideas and solutions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Matthews, thank you.
All right, well, first I'm going to apologize if all of a sudden I have to take a sip. I'm at the tail end of a chest cold, so I know my voice doesn't normally sound like this. Okay. So the development of the 2015-16 fiscal year budget was put together with extreme care as the goal of the Tuxbury School Committee is to provide a level of funding for our schools that ensures a sound instructional program for Tuxbury's most valuable resources, which is its students, while also being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. This budget narrative summarizes the current school needs and how various, excuse me, resources combine to meet those needs. It also will provide some information about the history that contributes to an understanding of the climate in which this budget was developed. So as you can see from the first slide, as it's in a contract negotiation year, the presented budget is going to reflect a zero salary increase across all bargaining units and all non-union personnel. This means that the salary increases that you will see will only be for step and lane changes only, as well as any increases due to longevity jumps. The end results for these increases equal out to $326,255. I've chosen to present a little differently than they have in the past. From this budget, you're going to see that in the past years, the offsets were listed on summary as salary offsets and operating offsets. It can be very confusing, as the gross salary will never be able to match out to any kind of budget that I can create with Munis. So I've decided to list the offsets separately, so you can see how we offset all of our costs. So what you see here is, it's a simple picture of our LEA, which is Local Education Agency, it's our budget summary, otherwise known as our local appropriation. And please note again, from these numbers, they do not reflect the salary increase since negotiations have not been settled. So as you can see from here, our gross salaries for FY16 are $27,577,525. And our gross operating costs are $11,928,860. This adds up to a total operating budget of $39,506,385. It's currently an increase of about $524,185, or 1.4 percent. The fixed costs presented are in line with what the town administrator has presented, and they equal $10,113,001. It's an increase of $504,441, or 5.25 percent. The total Tuxbury school budget presented is $49,619,386. This is an overall increase of $1,028,626, or 2.1 percent. So what you'll see from the previous page is the decrease in salaries is $111,340, and that's just due to the fact that I did separate the salary offsets, which you will see after. The decrease in the capital outlay of $20,000 is because we no longer have a lease for the Munis system, so we no longer needed that line now. And the total overall budget increase is the $1,028,626. Again, not including the salary increases, which is all still in line with what the town administrator presented the other night. So if you break down our local appropriation, it's broken down as salaries are 69.1 percent, our tuitions are 8.89 percent, transportation is 7.33 percent, supplies and materials are 4.64 percent, and our operations and maintenance are 9.34 percent. What isn't on here is if you added in the school portion of the benefits, which is the below the line, the health insurance and paid through the town, the total percentage for salary and benefits is about 75.5 percent of the overall school budget. So we have a level funding of the majority of all the operating accounts compared to fiscal year 2014, 2015. The major contributing factor to the changes of the select few operating accounts is due to the increases of all of our out-of-district special education tuition accounts. Due to the dramatic change in our out-of-district placements within the past year, and when I say past year, I mean January 2014 to January 2015, we have gone from 64 outplaced students to 83 outplaced students. Our costs have skyrocketed, and there's no way that we could have planned for that kind of an increase. And out of the 19 additional placements, 13 of them were move-ins. And in keeping in line with our increase in tuition costs, we also have a justified increase in our out-of-district transportation costs as well. So as I stated before, when we were looking at the summary sheet, I wanted to show you separately some of the ways that we offset some of our operational costs. This slide shows you grants. Now, these are grants that we're receiving this year, in current year of fiscal 15. I can't really give you what we're going to get in 16, as I'm not sure, you know, we haven't applied for grants yet, and we're not sure where that is going to lead. But this almost $1.3 million has helped to fray the overall cost to our district. We're using some of these funds to help improve training to our staff, help support our students for the MCAS tests, help update our library software, and much more. And again, I'm not quite sure where we're going to be for grants next year, but I'll be able to give you that closer to the other base. The other way that we offset our FY16 costs, and these are actual, is through our revolving accounts. You can see from this slide that we're planning on using approximately $2.7 million in order to fray some of the operational costs. $730,427 will be used for salaries, and $2,2,923 will be used for our operating costs. And lastly, I wanted to show you how we're going to offset some of our special education tuitions. In a collaborative effort between the school committee, the school district administration, the town administrator, the finance committee, and the selectmen, we've come up with a solution for our FY16 out-of-district costs. Due to the health insurance offsets and reduced assessments, the town administrator was able to transfer funds from the fixed costs into our tuition accounts for this current fiscal year. As a result of the transfer, we will be able to keep a higher balance in our revolving circuit breaker balance in June. On top of this transfer, there was a mutual agreement to draft a warrant article to transfer funds from the stabilization fund to be set aside in a separate fund for new out-of-district tuitions and placements in FY16. There will be specific parameters around this fund, which are, all the funds from the school operating budget must be spent first. The stabilization funds can only be spent with the approval of the finance committee. The school committee and the administration commits to not transferring funds out of the out-of-district tuition accounts for FY16. And the school committee and administration will provide a quarterly update to the finance committee on the number of out-of-district students, tuition costs, and circuit breaker reimbursement expenditures. All this being said, we plan on using $3,510,514 from our local appropriation that we're budgeting for, $1,783,923 out of circuit breaker funds to fund our out-of-district tuitions. We're anticipating that we're going to have five graduates by the end of this current fiscal year, which will be a reduction of $174,737. And then we will also have that separate town-funded stabilization account in the event that we can't cover any of the new or potential out-of-district placements within our local FY16 local appropriation. That kind of wraps it up. So thank you for taking the time to listen. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Palamino?
Open up. Question from screen, can you hear this? You have Mr. Francis?
Little question. Can you explain to the public who's watching this tonight, is that how circuit breaker works and how it's not, you don't get the money the same year as you're paying for those particular students?
Sure. Circuit breaker is a federal program in which they only look at out-of-district tuition costs. It doesn't count for special education transportation costs. And then they have a foundation, but, so this current fiscal year, the foundation is $41,508, I believe. So you would have to have an out-of-district tuition that is more and greater than that number in order to file for circuit breaker. So anybody less than that, the district has to eat that cost. Anyone more than that, there, we have to, by the end of this year, I believe it's in June, we have to file all the paperwork with the state, and we have to go through all of our tuitions, any special services that any of the students have, and then it goes through, and then we're, we're guaranteed a percentage. This current year, we get 72 percent. So let's say you had a tuition for $50,000. So we're going to submit $50,000. What's going to happen this year for that one person, assuming that there are no cuts between now and June, is, it is the difference between the $41,508 to the $50,000, and then currently this year, we're earmarked to get 72 percent of that difference. And again, that, that child or that student could have transportation costs, could have all these other costs associated with it, but it's not that part, it's only the tuition part. What we submit by June of this year reflects the number of, like, the amount of revenue that we're going to be taking in next year. So we're always a year behind when it comes to circuit breaker. And... And you'd never know. You can't, you can budget as well as you possibly can, but you don't know. The highest, I believe, we've ever gone is seventy-five, seventy-six percent. But you don't know what the percentage is going to be. Seventy-two is a very good percent to get, which is hopefully what we're going to get this year. But it's a, it's a little fickle, the way that they do it. But it is a year behind, the way the money comes in.
Mr. Francis, Mr. Cutler?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jim. Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. I just have one question, because you changed the way that we used to do it.
I did.
And I just want to make sure I'm following it correctly.
Sure.
So you took the revolving funds out, right?
I took all the revolving. So where you see-
Like seven thirty for salaries?
-on that sheet, everyone else can see where he was looking at.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're looking at this sheet, if you look at the FY fourteen expended and the FY fifteen original budget, the way that those budgets were presented, they put the salary offsets right on those lines and operating offsets right on those lines.
So if we did it, that would just, so this salary offset would be seven thirty-four twenty-seven?
Yes.
That you have. So that would be across from the seven sixty-four, right?
Yes.
And you would have added it into the top as well?
I would have.
Okay.
But see, what I would have never been able to show you is I could never printed out any kind of Munis report that would have had that salary growth.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that, so it would be added in and then subtracted out, the same with the operating. Instead of the one point two-five, that would be two million oh-two, right, roughly?
Yes and no. Because I think that there were some things that were, I showed you some of the offsets
Yeah.
By going through with Mr. Libby, I think there were some things that weren't listed here.
Oh, okay. So you had them.
Yeah. We've been cleaning up some things.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, that's fine. So I just wanted to make sure I followed.
In this way, it was, it's cleaner, and you can kind of see where everything's coming from.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Somebody else?
Thank you very much. I like the presentation. I just had a question about the stabilization account that you're referring to in the warrant article. So if that doesn't pass, and I hate to sound like a negative man, so what actually happens at that point?
Well, I can tell you personally where I think the district is going to do everything in their power to not have to touch that account. We're going to, obviously, we can't control the number of students that come in. We can't control the tuitions. But we can try to clean up other accounts if we have to, if it comes down to that.
So the question was, what happens if we're not successful at town meeting and passing that one out?
To get the stabilization account.
In other words, we would, we would, the day after town meeting, we would be meeting to talk about how do we make up a seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deficit in our budget?
Right. I think we would have to sit down with the finance committee again. We'd have to sit down with the town administrator and kind of go back to the board.
I just, for me, I think I'd like to see both scenarios, like, what would that look like? And I know it's really hard to say that now if that doesn't pass, but I think it's good to kind of put, you know, put that in perspective.
Yeah. And we are aware of that. We know that this would be a significant challenge for the school district if in April-
Yes.
-at town meeting, they, they, we were not successful in securing that article.
Okay. So the other question I have is, and this is my personal opinion, I feel like if this is successful, I almost feel it's almost like a little bit of a Band-Aid, because I know going forward into FY seventeen, we may have some issues as well. So what can we do? Is something legislatively we can do? I know, I know personally, I've talked to the chairman about this. I've reached out to Senator Italian and Representative Selly's office to see, because she actually was just appointed to the Education Commission. So I, we're trying to figure out what can we do to try to move forward with this and not make this a Band-Aid solution. I mean, you know, do you have any suggestions? I mean, that's, this is out of our control.
I can tell you that one, one thing that we did try to go through today is the extraordinary relief came out. But Nancy and I sat down and we, we went through every single tuition, and sadly, we are below the bar of where we have to be. You have to be a hundred and twenty-five percent more than you submitted in the previous year in order to qualify for extraordinary relief.
So that's a separate, it's a separate fund-
It is.
-that's available-
It's part of circuit breaker.
-that school districts can tap into that have had these extraordinary increases.
Right.
We've had them, but our numbers do not qualify because they're not high enough.
Right. We're very close, but sadly, we have not gone over the threshold that we need to in order to qualify for it.
So with this extraordinary relief, I mean, as, yeah, I'm sure, we're not the only town going through this.
No, we are not.
So, I mean, can we talk to our legislators about taking a look at this? And can we partner with other towns? And we, I mean, that's what we're here to do. So can you?
Well, I can tell you, like, for our case, we do partner with the Reckon and Chelmsford for our special education transportation. It is a year that we're, we're in the middle of actually putting out the RFP. We're going to put out the RFP at the end of this month, and we're hoping to be able to have enough in there that maybe our-
Costs will go down.
Right. At least our costs might be able to go down, because I think that the gas prices right now are lower than they were three years ago when they went out of bid.
So your suggestion about can we reach out to our legislators?
Yes.
Absolutely, we should be doing this.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we have a very good relationship with Representative Selly. I think Senator Italian would be certainly amenable to a meeting with us. That is something that I know in the past, we've had legislative breakfast, if you will. We've, we've taken some of our legislators out for breakfast, and they've met at different locations. I'm more than willing to try to set that up, to try to talk to them. So in addition to looking for some support here, the other thing that we have to be very cognizant of is that seventy-two percent, that is at the discretion of the legislature. They could reduce that to sixty tomorrow for next year, and that would have a significant impact on us.
Yes.
So that's one of the reasons why we should probably try to set something up and grab them, and perhaps we could look at possibly doing this through badly collaborative. The Board of Directors there. I'm certain that all of the superintendents have concerns, or we could try to do something on our own.
Yeah. I mean, I know I've been approached by, and I'm sure many other board members have been approached by, you know, parents who have seen this in the paper, and this is, you know, obviously a concern. And I think right now, we need to work collaboratively with our special education PAC, other parents that reached out to us, to get together with our legislators, and I just don't want to see this, you know, kind of the last minute thing. We need to take proactive-
Sure. I'll set that up for the next, within the next, you know, depending upon their schedules. Let's say within the next month.
Okay. And would you mind reaching out to the special education PAC just to see if they might be able to work with us as well?
Sure. Get the PAC.
Thank you, Mr. Pooch. You know, just following up on Mr. Pooch's comment on collaboration, I know it was, there was many meetings, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears between all the departments, the selectmen, the town manager, to come up with a solution for the, for the budget gap that we face. So kudos to all those involved, to at least get us to a point where we can, you know, try to plan and reach out, talk to our state legislatures and all that, our reps. But, you know, when you talk about what, I think there's some urgency there, and another point of emphasis, if it doesn't pass at town meeting, you know, when you look at the big colorful pie chart they presented, which I like colors and pies, and that's great stuff, but salaries and benefits is seventy-five percent of our budget. So I think we can kind of all assume what could happen, you know, if we don't, you know, raise the awareness to the, to the public, make this is a very, very important issue with the school for the schools right now. People need to get involved and help out and try to come up with some solutions. But, you know, for what it took to get us to this point, huge collaboration between the selectmen and school committee, our administration and town manager, we appreciate that. But again, if, if we don't get that passed at town meeting, I'm just trying to emphasize that we need all the help we can from our parents to make sure that we have that money accessible if we need it. So I just want to put a little-
I just think that we, you know, parents just kind of feel the last few weeks, at least from what I've heard, is it's kind of, you know, been all divided about what's been out there. And I think at this point, what we really need to do is, is work with our parents, because we need to collaborate, we need to make sure this moves forward, and if we don't, we're in a really bad situation. We haven't emphasized that earlier.
And I've talked to a lot of some special ed families, and I see that collaboration, and I hope that continues, that communication. So just wanted to put a little, I'm out again.
Just calling, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say a few things on the budget, because I think it's important that everyone out there in the community knows where all their school committee members stand. First, I'd like to say that this budget has been a challenging budget. I mean, it's the times that we live in, it's the financial constraints that we have. I don't think this is any reflection of any one group or any one thing. I think it is, the funding that we get is not what we were used to seeing ten years ago. We've seen that in all the years coming. I think it's also that, you know, there's not a lot of fluff with our budget, so we're really down to the bare, bare bones of our budget on the school side. There are so many needs that we are not meeting. We do an excellent job with the money that we get for our budget, because the money that we get, we all know, is not what we really truly need. So I think that needs to be said, and I think the community needs to hear that. There are so many things that this committee and I think our administration team would like to do. So I want to definitely respond to, this has nothing to do with any select group. We are level-funded budget. That's a difficult thing, because it means if anything changes, and, you know, we're talking about, you know, the out-of-district, that's just one thing. Next year could be something else. So it has nothing to do with any group or anything. What it has to do with is, our budget continues to be level-funded. And as a direct result of this, our needs continue to go up. You know, we have lane changes, we have salaries, we have operating costs, we have this beautiful new high school. You know, with that comes additional expenses. So we've seen that as a kind of result over the last five years, that things continue to increase, and even though our budget, we are so thankful and grateful, and I am being on the school committee the past five years, this has been a great time for education in Tuxbury. Our town manager, Richard Montori, is phenomenal. He is a supporter of education in this town. He has given us more support, not just financially, but in many other ways of education in this town. I would say the same for, for the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen. This was a perfect example of, there are things that are out of our control. This budget season, things were out of our control. We had increases in different areas. We need to address them. We don't have the increase in the money that we would like to have. So as a direct result, I think this was a great, and we've heard it before, there was great collaboration between the school district and our town manager, Richard Montori, our Board of Select and our finance com, our school committee, where everybody sat down and said, this is a problem, it's not something that anyone could have controlled. As a school district, we meet the needs of all children, and that's exactly what we're doing. And we're in this situation because we need to continue to meet the needs of all children, and because some of our costs did go up. And again, it's not, it's because we're level-funded. You can't continue to do more and less, that old saying. So I do think that we need to all look at this as a positive. This has been a positive situation in the sense that people came together, they worked together, they came up with a real solution. The real solution is our community needs to keep continuing to come together. I hope that all the people that are watching tonight and all the people that follow education show up at that town meeting, and they vote for that article that we're going to give you all the information on, because without the community's support, you know, we don't want to go backwards. We want to continue to go forward with education, and to meet all the needs of all of our students, we need that support of our community to come to town meeting and to absolutely help with that article. Mrs. Pooch is absolutely right. If that article doesn't go through, we're now looking at where are we going to come up with that deficit? And there's going to be things that we're not going to want to do, because we don't want to go backwards. We want to go forwards. Dr. O'Connor has done a great job in this district, leading us in a master plan to continue new initiatives to implement, not only to our curriculum and our instruction, but also for our vision and what we want our schools to look like. In order to do that, we need to continue to work together and be positive. You know, there's going to be things. Like I said, next budget season, it could be something totally different. And unless we all work together and come together to continue to move Tuxbury in the right direction, we're going to make our schools better and better. So again, this was a very difficult budget season. There were many people here, as well as administration, that put up many hours, additional hours, into finding a solution for this problem, which was, we were level-funded. We should be happy in this time that we were level-funded. There's many districts, not like Tuxbury, that are, you know, in deficits, and they're having to do cuts, and they're having to do layoffs. So this is a good time for Tuxbury, as many people, we're getting some, maybe not such positive feedback. We have to look at the positive in this situation, and it's that we're going to continue to move forward to give the best education to all the students here in Tuxbury. So again, if the message I can give you is, please come to town meeting, support our budget, people worked really hard to come up with some great solutions, and number two, we're going to need you to support that article, which is to put money into that revolving account, so that if we had, like Mrs. Matthews said, we're going to try not to touch that money. If in two thousand and sixteen, we continue to see increases after we level fund our budget, we'll have some money there to address the needs of all students in this district. And we need support on both those articles. And we will be getting that information out to the public before the May town meeting, and we hope to see everybody come out and rally around the schools.
And the other-
Thank you, Mr. Dick.
The other part of that, if the warrant article does go through, it is not a one-year thing. They were, they did discuss making it a couple years, keeping it there, keeping it, if we didn't have to touch it, or even if we only had to touch a little bit of it-
Would have it two thousand and sixteen.
We would have it for seventeen-
In seventeen, yes.
And eighteen possibly. And if we did happen to have a year where we had money left over in the account, if we didn't need it, then we could replenish that account.
Yeah, I think just, I mean, you know, with my experience in being on hand last couple of years, I mean, over the last six weeks, I think it's very been, it's been very difficult for Dr. O'Connor. We've been in and out of meetings, and it's been very difficult to, you know, him to deal with this. But, you know, we've, we've scrubbed our budget, you know, we've done all we can, and it's really great that, you know, we're able to do this. But, you know, again, to me, it's just a short-term fix, and I did, there's just, we have to really be able to reach out to our legislators. I think legislatively is the way to go, but, you know, we're trying all we can, so.
Any, if Dr. Ryan want to follow up?
Mrs. Matthews, what's your plan for providing a line item budget to, to the committee? The thick line item?
The line item for sixteen?
Yeah.
I, I have it all set to go. If you, I don't know if you want a summary of it for next week?
I think that would be-
That can be fine.
Continue the process. Next week is, do we have a public hearing?
We do.
So that may be a great time to go through-
I have it all set.
-some of the highlights of rarest line items in that. So let's, let's put that on the agenda, and that way you'll have that, you know, which again, it's a thicker packet than what you have, and it has all of our line items broken out, and you can see where all of your dollars are going.
Okay.
All right? That'll be on the next agenda next week.
We can, we can absorb what we have here tonight. If you do have some questions, it would be beneficial to get them to Mr. Matthews before next Wednesday's meeting, if we could. And unless there's any other pressing questions or comments, I'd like to maybe move on the, move on the agenda. All right? Thanks, Mr. Matthews, for putting this together and working through that cold. It's been tough for you, so thank you.
Should have heard me Monday. It's much better now.
All right. So what we're going to do is, Dr. Conner, is anybody wishing to, is anybody registered?
No one is registered. I don't know if there, we do have visitors this evening. Anyone wish to speak to an item on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I just have to say one thing. It's sometimes-
You have to come up and sit up here, please.
Well, I can just stand here, I can say it.
Nope. Go to the microphone over here. So if you, if you put the laptop down-
In Superwood, Main Street?
Just move it, move the laptop, if you would just close it. There, there you go. There's the microphone.
If you could before, just state your name and your street, your street address, that'd be very good.
Yep. I'm Erin Knight. I live on Sharon Street, Tuxbury, and I run Liam Nation. And all I have to say is that I, you know, dig all the whole, let's be positive, let's work together, and I think that we do often try to do that as parents of children with special needs. And I'd like to say to Dr. O'Connor that sometimes it's not what you say, but how you say it. And I found the comments that you made and the email that you sent out ridiculously offensive. And I will never change my mind on that. I had a respect for you once, but I no longer have. As I feel my son wears his disability on his face and he is now a target for parents to feel like that's the reason that special education is where it is. His out of district placement was put up for everyone to see. He's the only child that goes to that particular school, so everybody got to know that that was him. So if I had a bumper sticker on my car, who knows what could have happened? I found it very unfair. I wrote a letter, I got no feedback, that's fine. But my feelings about this will never change. And I'm sorely, sorely disappointed that you chose to do it the way you chose to do it. And that you had nothing to say back about how it was done.
Thank you. So we understand your comments on it, Dr. O'Connor. You'll speak. I just wanted to, you know, me personally, I support Dr. O'Connor, I support his efforts. And I know you're going to just nod and say yes, but that's, I do because I believe he's in it for every kid in Tewksbury. And, you know, I think we've talked about this issue with many parents and he's, he's, you know, he's, he's getting facts out. And there's a lot of people in the town that want the facts. And it was not directed, like Mrs. Palamino said, at any one special group. He's educating, we're trying to educate every, every kid. So I just wanted to, just wanted the public to say that. I appreciate Dr. O'Connor and I disagree with your comments. And I just wanted to, and I'm a little offended that you would attack Dr. O'Connor that way.
Well, I didn't expect anything less, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so I, thanks for coming. And next time, if you could just register for the Citizens Forum, that would help us all out. I appreciate that. Dr. O'Connor, any comments or want to move forward?
I'll be honest with you, I, I'm disappointed that Mrs. Knite feels that way. My intention was never to pit one group against the other. People are constantly talking about transparency in government. I couldn't say that we had a $1.8 million deficit in our budget and not explain where that deficit came from. I can't be opaque. I can't say, well, we have it, but, you know, it's, my comments, you know, I had other people who said, thank you for the information. We weren't aware of it. We had our kindergarten roundup last night. We had the largest turnout we've had in a while. I explained to people why we could not introduce full-day kindergarten. And I said something to the effect that, you know, in your own budget, you have to balance it. And that's what we have to do. I couldn't, in good faith, introduce kindergarten knowing that we were significantly in the hole in one particular area in our budget. My intention was never, ever to target or identify any group as the one responsible for not having full-day kindergarten. Basically, we do not have full-day kindergarten because right now, fiscally, we cannot afford it.
Thank you. All right, so at that point, if there's, there's no one other registered to speak, so we're just going to move on to the agenda. We're going to go to Mr. Cutlass for approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14, 2015 regular meeting.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the minutes of January 14, 2015, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. It's a 5-0 unanimous vote.
All right, I'll move the minutes of the January 14, 2015 executive session meeting.
Second.
So there's a motion and second to approve the executive session minutes of January 14, 2015. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. 5-0 vote.
I'll move the minutes of the January 21, 2015 special meeting.
Uh, second.
A motion and second to approve the special minutes of January 21, 2015. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. That's a 5-0 unanimous vote.
And I'll move the minutes of the January 21, 2015 executive session meeting.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the January 21, 2015 second session minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. It's a 5-0 unanimous vote. And then over to the submission and payment of bill.
And the payroll, I'll move the payroll for the period ending January 15, 2015 in the amount of $1,128,863.86.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve the payroll period ending January 15, 2015 in the amount of $1,128,863.86. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. 5-0 unanimous vote. Let's do this consent agenda. Is anything, anyone wishes to allow the consent agenda to talk to tonight? See another motion?
I make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Right, a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. 5-0 unanimous vote. And then Dr. O'Connor, superintendent staff reports?
Yeah, I just have a few items to discuss this evening. Mr. Lyons is doing a great job of promoting the father-daughter dance that's taking place this Sunday. I believe there still are a few tickets available at the Community Service Office. Community Services is open until 3:00 p.m. And there may be some tickets available at the door, but I wouldn't take that chance. I would make sure I stocked into Community Service or at least called and ordered them and have them at the door waiting for you. The Healthy U.S. School Challenge Bronze Award Ceremony will be taking place at the Orion School on Wednesday, February 11th at 8:30 a.m. There will be a ceremony at 9 o'clock. You are all welcomed and invited to a den. A nice little breakfast if you're, if you are so inclined to do that. There was a flyer, I think, in your packet identifying that. And then finally, let me just talk a little bit about weather conditions. This is winter and we are experiencing after a very mild December, January, February is coming in, the end of January, February has come in with sort of a real roar. We are expecting more snow over the weekend and into Monday. I cannot begin to tell you the number of comments, both positive and negative, that I receive on my calls to either have school, not to have school, or to have delays. Clearly, there are people out there who have difference of opinions, different opinions than my decision-making. And I know it's caused some concern. So I always have to understand that we've used three of our days up to this point, I believe, three no-school days. We have five built into our calendar. If we go beyond five days, we would have to look at making up those days through some way within our school calendar. That could mean a curtailment of, or a shortening of the April vacation. It could also mean having Saturday school. Or it could mean working with the union to see if we could go beyond the official last day of school. But that is a negotiated item with the teachers that we would have to take a look at. Clearly, we make the decisions that's in the best interest of our children. But I rely on a variety of information to make that decision. And that includes everything from the Department of Public Works and their offices and their ability to clear the streets of snow, our facilities to ensure that our schools are open, our sidewalks are shoveled, our parking lots are cleared, our entryways are cleared. We do the very best we can. We check other areas as well. We look at, I talked to approximately 15 to 20 superintendents via email or text messaging in this. And I will tell you, there are differences of opinions within the ranks of the superintendents as well. This past week, where we had a two-hour delay, there were a number of communities that were closed, communities right around us. Yet there were communities right around us that had two-hour delays as well. Again, I rely on a variety of information. One of the concerns I hear from parents are about new drivers, that it's unsafe for a child to drive to school in snow. And I, I agree, having been a father of two daughters and when it snowed, and my 16-year-old daughter and her little Honda Civic, you know, we said, you leave the Civic at home and you're taking the bus because we just felt she wasn't skilled enough to be driving in snow. She just hadn't had that type of experience. And we would encourage parents to do the same. If they feel as though the weather conditions are not right for young drivers, then they should exercise some parental authority here and ask the child to possibly either take the school bus or drive the child to school. In all situations, in all circumstances, if a parent feels as though it is unsafe, feel free to keep your child at home. I've said that repeatedly to, to parents. If they personally feel it's unsafe and we are maintaining an open school that day, they should keep their child home, just like they would do if it was a rainy day, a storm came through, a rainy day in April, high winds, parents might opt to keep their child home instead of having their child waiting at the bus stop where you have the potential of high winds, poor visibility for auto wheels, falling tree limbs, you would do that. So we have two months, one week left of what I would consider official winter, right up through April 15th. So we are going to do our best to make sure that we make these decisions that are in the best interest of our children. Sounds good.
Yes. Mrs. Pooch?
Dr. O'Connor, with the school cancellations, and I know we're going to be getting a lot more snow in the next few days. Mr. Libby's done a wonderful job of putting out the one call now. But could we also put out a reminder to parents that when, you know, they do go back to school, just kind of, we've been having a lot of problems, I know, at least in my neighborhood, with the snowbanks and just being very cautious of where the kids stand and, you know, who's coming around. So just for parents to kind of keep an eye. I don't know if you can just give a reminder to kind of be cautious around the snowbanks, you know, when the kids are, you know, lining up for the buses and stuff. Because the other day I came around the corner of my street and a person in front of me almost took out a mom.
We can do that.
Yeah, it's tough with those, I mean, there is literally nowhere to follow the snow on some of these streets, but we need to be safe.
What's the latest weather report, 12 to-
18 to 25, I heard.
Oh, oh. So, that's going to be very interesting. So that's it for my report. Do you have anything, Mrs. Matthews?
I may as well.
Nope, we're, we're good. And I believe I touched on all of Mrs. Ravens' plans as well. So Dr. O'Connor, thank you very much. Anything to add? Any questions? That's great. Thank you. Right on down to committee reports. There hasn't been a high school building committee, so we'll jump on down to the committee. And Mrs. Pooch, if you want to take your-
No, thanks on the committee. We're actually meeting on February 12 at 5:30 at the senior center.
Okay. And what's on the Tewksbury Education Foundation report? And then the special ed pack?
We'll be meeting for our executive session meeting on March 18th at 8:45 at the superintendent's office.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, moving right along, policy change, proposals and adoptions. Looks like the policy committee's been busy. And Pooch, are you going to take us through that?
Yeah, so we're working on Section K, so the policy policies are looking to be rescinded. And this is the first reading. KCD-E Grants and Gifts, Acceptance and Expenditure. KIV, Open House and School Committee Meetings. Also in Section K, Community Relations, we're looking to revise the following policies. And again, this is the first reading. KVBA, Non-Custodial Parent Rights. KCB, Community Involvement Decision Making. KCD, Acceptance of Gifts. KE, Public Complaints and Instructional Learning Materials and Discipline. KEB, Public Complaints About School Personnel. KEB-R, Public Complaints About School Personnel. KC, Public Complaints About the Curriculum or Instructional Materials. KHB, Advertising in Schools. KI, Visitors in Schools. KIA, Vehicles Running on School Property. KID, Children of Tewksbury School Employees. And KLG, Relations with Police Authorities. And if anyone has any questions about any of those policies, they can reach out to myself, Mrs. Palamino at Superintendent's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Pooch. Full business, we had a nice night, Dr. O'Connor, last night, Tony Romano, the amazing four. The whole family's in attendance. Anything to add there?
It was an outstanding evening for the Romano family and for Tewksbury Memorial High School. There was a huge turnout. There were probably 200 people in the gym. It was very exciting. We had representatives from MIAA there, the entire Romano family, friends, colleagues, retired administrators, former students, collegiate athletes that played for Mr. Romano at the University of Lowell. It was, it was a great night. We did put the cock before the horse. We had not officially voted to dedicate the court in his honor. We had the ceremony last night. It was just appropriate for us to, to do that. But because of cancellation of our last meeting, so tonight, I need a motion from a school committee member to allow the Tewksbury Memorial High School administrative staff to dedicate the court to, in memory of Anthony Tony Romano, longtime employee of the Tewksbury High School. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to name the Tewksbury Memorial High School Basketball Court in honor of Anthony Tony Romano. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Palamino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Pooch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all is opposed. 5-0 unanimous vote. So that sounds good. Right into new business. We have a student activity account request, Dr. O'Connor?
Yes, you have a request from the high school principal for student activities, including TMH Buddies Program, the Garden Club, and Art Club. And then we're looking at transferring the remaining balance of the dance, dance team account to the Parent Booster Club and move money in the AP Test account to the PSAT Test account. And Mrs. Matthews can explain this a little more.
Yeah, it's keeping in line with the audit that we had and the new rules where the school committee absolutely has to vote on everything. So we need to make some changes within the certain accounts. And as Dr. O'Connor said, they're looking to open up three new club accounts, the ones that he mentioned, the Buddies, the Garden Club, and the Art Club. And where the dance team, they don't have, they have the Booster Club now, so they don't really have the student activity anymore. So they're looking to take that balance and they're looking to give it to the Booster Club and just need your approval. And the AP Test account shouldn't be in a student activities account, so we're looking to transfer it out and put it into the PSAT, just change the name of the account, which is a revolving account, and get the funds out of student activity. So we just need a school committee vote in order to do so.
What's the cost of the club, the salary?
Yeah, it's 700.
Right, but the cost for each of these clubs is approximately $750. There would be a fee, a student fee that would be assessed. You have to have a minimum, I believe, of 10 students to, for no other club to be formed. And I believe they've met that criteria with these three groups.
Okay. We have a couple of questions on this, Paulamino.
Well, Dr. O'Connor just answered one of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question was, you're saying the $750 for each one, is that the stipend of the staff that's going to run those clubs?
Yes.
Okay, and then it is a minimum of 10, like we've done past practice? Okay, that's great. And then can you also tell me, what's the remaining balance of the dance team to the Parent Booster account? Because there's no numbers here.
I know, and I don't have her sheet. What I can do is first thing in the morning, I can, I can email you those numbers.
We could put that on the next agenda. Why don't we pull that?
I want to say it's between 200 and 250. I just can't remember the exact dollar.
I've been more comfortable voting with the actual details, so yeah, why don't we-
I want to, in my head, I see 239, but I don't, I know it's between those two numbers.
So why don't we make a motion to table this until the next school committee meeting and not vote on it?
Could you vote on the, on the three clubs so we can get those officially going? We, you know, we're not worried about the funding for that. We know what the cost is. If you would do that, then we'll, we'll bring it next week with the dollar values for both of these.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the, creating the new three club and activity groups? I'll make that motion. So there's a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve three new clubs, activities to TMHS, Student Activities Account, the TMHS Buddies, the Garden Club, and the Art Club. Roll call vote. Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Palamino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Pooch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, it's a 5-0 unanimous vote to approve those three, those clubs It's a five-o unanimous vote to approve those three, those clubs and activities. And then is there a motion to table the other two remaining votes? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So the motion and second to table the transfer of the remaining balance of the dance team account, and to move the money in the AP test account, let's table that till next meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. It's a five-o unanimous vote. And then we have the 2015 draft, 2015, 2016 school calendar proposal draft?
This is a draft. We usually run this for several weeks before we finally vote on it. I want you to know that we've spent an awful lot of time on this calendar. If you take a look at the month of September, you'll see that Labor Day is the latest it can possibly be in the, in the calendar. It's on Monday, the 7th. So, school will actually start for our employees on the 31st of August and on the 1st of September. Students will be in attendance on the 2nd and 3rd. This is much later than we usually have done so in the past. However, there is a, there is an issue in our teacher's contract, a provision that allows us to start school a week before Labor Day, not two weeks. Ideally, we'd love to start on the 24th. We'd be, we'd be finishing June 17th, which we could have finished on June 10th, but that's not going to happen. We did make an effort to balance, looking at the half-day kindergartens, to ensure that we have a reasonable number of days that affect both programs, both the Monday morning program and the Monday afternoon program. Feel free to look this over, make some suggestions or comments. This is just a draft. We will not vote on this until the March meeting, so that people will have an opportunity to look at it and comment.
Okay. Any comments right now? What does Ms. Palomino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. On the memo on the front page, and it's just actually a question for permission, there were changes from the current school calendar on the first page, and it said, you know, the October 29th got moved to November 3rd, and then also moved the September 24th to October 1st. I just, just an explanation to the community on what happened and why those were moved.
Well, we've, we've been in consultation with other school districts, and we were looking at partnering with other school districts for staff development. Many districts in the area use Voting Day as an in-service day, so we looked at moving our November to the same day that other districts. And that way, we, you know, if we, if we do this well over the next couple of years, we could pool money and resources, pull in nationally-known speakers to do some in-servicing with our staff and so forth. So those were some of the reasons why we made some of those changes. And if you were to go back and look at various calendars, those days were fluid. They, they, they might not have been that first week, they might have been the third week in November, so we made some changes that I think will be, in the long run, beneficial to us and to our staff.
So that just means that two of the professional development days scheduled for this year are really gonna happen next year, which so they'll have two extra in the 2015 calendar year?
There are four professional, full-day professional days.
Yeah.
Two at the start of school, and then two that we, we put in the, in the school calendar. I believe one of those days is November 3rd, and next is March 8th. We usually try to do one the first semester and then one in the second semester.
Okay, so that leads me to my one other question. So for professional development days, I guess my question is, it looks like in recent years, we've moved them to the middle of the week. It looks like most of them are on Thursdays, you have one on Wednesday in the draft calendar. Can you explain to the community?
Sure.
Why we do that?
Sure. We do that primarily for balance. We have these kindergarten programs that have a half-day, one day a week, and then have full days. And it was two years ago, we had a parent come to us and said, "My child is in kindergarten. They're supposed to be in school," not 180 days, because they were in the part-time program, so 90 days, and that would include a half a day, "but my, my child is in school only 86 days. They're in 90 days. That's not fair. My child is not getting four days." So our staff spends a lot of time looking at both kindergarten and other impacts to this, to ensure that our programs are somewhat balanced. We can't, we've never been able to even it out. We usually ate today in either direction, or a half a day, I think might have been the case here. So we're very cognizant of that.
Okay, thanks, Dr. O'Connor.
Anybody else? So it's a draft, take a look at it. When are we gonna approve this?
We can't put it in next week, but there's just not enough time, so it'll be at the first March meeting, which is a little late for us, and that was primarily because we had been in discussion with other districts about the 3rd of November.
Okay. Thank you. And the last item we've pulled off.
We're pulling this off, and I will briefly explain to you. After consultation with a number of districts that have been successful in securing MSBA support, I think we can make a case at the train hand to incorporate another standard into our request. Right now, we're looking at Standard 7, which talks about the age and the function of the building. I think if we look at the standard that deals with overcrowding, we can make a case for that building being overcrowded, not from a student standpoint, but programmatically. When you have an art room where a quarter of the room is cordoned off, and that's for physical education, when you have people on a stage, when you have a library that shares space with the OTPT, the computer lab, and the writing teacher, you can make a case that the building is not capable of handling today's programs, and that is an issue of overcrowding and space utilization. So I think we're gonna revise that. I also asked the town council to do this from the, from their agenda, and we will have this on the March agenda for you and for the town council. The document is due mid-April, so we'll have plenty of time.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, school committees, management committees, Ms. Pooch?
I just want to mention that the special education pack, this coming Tuesday, February 10th, will be having a transition planning workshop, which is gonna be presented by the Federation for Children's Special Needs. It's from 7 to 9 at the Wynn School Library. And the only other question I had is that I've been getting some feedback from some people in the community about the Comcast Verizon connection. Like tonight, we had no audio, I believe, on Comcast, and, and I think a few weeks back, our last meeting wasn't televised, so I'm just trying to find out if we're making any headway on the connections.
First I heard of it.
We have the new QVidian, right?
Correct.
I know I reached out to Dr. O'Connor.
We've just spent thousands of dollars updating all of this. We should have, be not having a single problem with our broadcast.
I had two phone calls at least the last meeting, the next day, saying that it wasn't televised, so I don't know if it's Comcast or Verizon thing, and, you know, even tonight with the Comcast.
First I heard of it. First Dr. O'Connor's heard of it.
Well, there are people in the community that are having difficulty. Please let me know. Either text me, email me, whatever, and we will look into it, because we, we've spent a lot of money in this past year trying to ensure that our broadcasts get out there to every home.
I would just say that when I go back to that room down there, I see and I hear Comcast. I see it and I hear it. So it's leaving this building. What happens in South Tewksbury on the poles, we'd like that feedback.
Yeah, we need to know that.
Right.
Mr. Kellis?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Francis?
I'm good.
And Ms. Palomino?
Nothing to do.
The chair has nothing to add. So future school committee meetings, supplementary meetings, February 11th, next Wednesday, public budget hearing at 6:30, and we will have our regular scheduled meeting, I think, after that. Then March 5th, we have a Thursday special joint meeting with the finance committee on the budget, and then March 11th is a regular scheduled school committee meeting. It does appear that the high school building committee is meeting in February, Mr. Francis?
Yeah, we're gonna have the official meeting.
I think it is. But it's still meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's good to hear, and is there any future agenda items? Seeing done, the motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Jim.
I'll second it.
The motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. It's a five-o unanimous vote. Thank you. Mr. Jim.